Welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District's Regular Board of Education Meeting for Wednesday, May 27, 2015. Is this meeting properly noticed, Mrs. Collins?
Yes and yes.
Can you call the hall, please?
Deal.
Here.
Eliason.
Here.
Evan.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Versace.
Here.
Lyberger.
Here.
Olmsted.
Here.
We're going to be led at the Pledge of Allegiance by Jacob Shapiro Brain-Based Instructional Laboratory School students Aurora McDuppy, Elijah Johnson, and Gavin Rudy-Lair.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have the presentation of Middle and High School Art Awards. I think I'm supposed to stand over here.
Yeah, play your winner, right?
The winner is up.
Excellent. Okay. We would ask that each student has their name and their artwork is posted, that they would step up and I'll read your names. Rochelle Brown. Jessica Engdahl. Nicole Selkert. Allison Schmidl. Bailey Tabbert. Brittany Naya Carter. Brittany Kluck. Susan Lor. Emily Berger. Brianna Mason. Athena Dito. Michelle Hunter.
Mitchell.
Mitchell Hunter. Haley Wickert. Jacob Schneider. Grace Munich. Rachel Butt-Kowitz. Riley Hart. Isaiah Bo-Chinsey. Israel Esparza. Raven Clear. Jill Evans. Brandon Remy. Agelik Lor. Stephanie Pitts. Ella Tigert. Kayen Lor. Tessa Demo. And Kyla Lor. Katrina Hapner. That completes.
You guys can stay if you wish. These meetings get somewhat long. Enjoy the evening outside your mortgage beetle.
Thank you.
At this time, we have the recognition of Wave Robotics Team. If you guys could come up.
If you do plan to stand, if you turn your mic way upwards so that it gets close to sound for you. Otherwise, it does work better if you do sit down close to the mics.
He doesn't have a seat. Is there an extra chair back there?
Yeah, I think you can grab one of those chairs and pull it forward. There you go.
Hi, I'm Becca. I'm finishing my junior year at Oshkosh West, and I would like to start this off with a thank you. We'd like to thank you for all of your support that you've given us. And furthermore, I would like to thank Al Whining from the Oshkosh Rock Department for his support, Mr. Jones and Mr. Reimer for their gracious gift of the space that they've given us and the utilities. And I would like to thank you for giving us all the support. Without your support, we wouldn't have been able to make it to championships six out of the eight years that we've been a team. Wave has not only been recognized for our robot, but we have also been recognized for our impact on our community and our students. We have been awarded the Regional Chairman's Award two times. The Chairman's Award shows that Wave isn't all about the robots. It's about the students. Me personally, I was incredibly shy before I became a member of Wave Robotics. Wave Robotics has taught me how to be more confident in what I say and do. Without the support of Wave, I would not be able to sit in front of you all and to speak to you as I am now. I want to thank you again for supporting the team. And I would like to show you now. I would like to introduce you to the 2015 game Recycle Rush.
Welcome to the 2015 First Robotics Competition. Here's how we play Recycle Rush. The objective is to build stacks of totes, place recycling bins on top, and recycle litter. The game is played by two alliances of three teams each on a 27-by-54-foot field, divided into red and blue sides by a step. During the 15-second autonomous period at the start of each match, robots use pre-programmed instructions to try to move themselves, yellow totes, and recycling containers into the auto zone. Bonus points are awarded for stacking the yellow totes. As the teleoperator period starts, drivers step forward to take the controls. Alliances earn points by stacking totes on their platforms. Each gray tote is worth two points. Teams may obtain gray totes from either the landfill, the step, or from a human player via the tote chute. Recycling containers placed on top of scored totes are worth four points per level. Robots may obtain litter from the human players via the litter chute. Litter in a scored recycling container is worth six points. Alliances may attempt to throw their litter on the opposing alliance's side of the field until there are 20 seconds left in the match. Have fun with Recycle Rush and good luck.
Alright, teams, take your positions. Will we get on X-Men? In three, two, one, rush!
And we're underway, ladies and gentlemen. 15 seconds of autonomous action. Watching now is 28-26 makes its move. With three containers and three yellow totes, that'll be 28 points for the red alliance. The red alliance was able to kick up 20 points during the autonomous period as well. This is two very closely matched alliances. This is what's going to come right down to the wire. Working the landfill now for the blue alliance. First team, 23-38. Quickly scoring a six stack. Far side of the field, one of the referees there tossing a flag on the red alliance. Head referee will sort out the details. Will explain it as the match concludes. Those penalty points will be deducted from the red alliance's overall score. Near side of the field, speaking of the red alliance, 987. They've got a six stack, they've kept it off with an empty recycle container. That's still worth 36 points. On the move now for the blue alliance, 10-23. 42 points added from the six stack capped off with a full recycle container. 133 to 116, blue alliance out in front. Red alliance working to narrow the gap now. Still plenty of time, about 40 seconds remaining in the match. 25-12, on the move now. 25-12, Mickey's near double. A six stack capped off, 42 additional points. 145 to 139, blue alliance has retaken the lead. 25 seconds remaining. Here comes the red alliance. Sliding it into place with 20 seconds left, 987. Six stack capped off with an unfilled recycle container. Red alliance regains the lead, 8 seconds remaining. Coming right down to the wire, 5 seconds. Time, the house is fire! Incredible match play, folks. And it did come right down to the wire. Blue alliance was coming off strong. Did they have enough to overtake the red alliance? We'll give our head referee and his crew a chance to count up all the points, check the penalties. We'll be back in just a moment with your official results. Ladies and gentlemen, your scores are in. And we have a new official championship high score. 283 to 215, it is the red alliance! And with that outstanding match play, your red alliance now bolts into the number one position.
As you can see, our game each year is a different challenge.
The competition is fierce, and since each season, the game is different. We have gone through the design process on how to build a winning robot in six short weeks. I am proud of our team, proud of our robot, but especially proud of the software that goes into the robot because I helped write it. We wrote the software that the robot uses for the autonomous period that you saw, and it scored the max number of points possible in 15 short seconds. And we achieved an auto that had the highest average score in the world, as well as the highest match score in the world. This hands our experience cannot be possible without the support of our mentors, who are professionals in their fields. With their guidance, we take what we have learned in school and we apply it to the world of engineering. They have given me the opportunity to reach out into the field and I'll be attending Milwaukee School of Engineering in the fall for software engineering. Robotics is not just about the robot, though. This last winter, I was inspired to reach out to the middle and elementary schools in our district and share the basic lessons of what I have learned in the past four years. With the help of our student advisor, mentors, other students in our schools, I was part of our group that conducted the Hour of Code and taught simple programming skills and logical thinking to 792 students in our school district. We received wonderful feedback from the teachers, saying how these students that almost never focused in class were really engaged and how they worked well with us. Like 65% of our team, I also became involved with Wave Robotics through activities in middle school, specifically through FLL. I continue to be involved in mentoring teams every fall during their competition season. Our team has hosted FLL regionals in the past, and this last year, we hosted our first FLL sectional, impacting over 800 students. I respectfully ask for your consideration to continue and increase funding for FLL coaches. I also ask for the recognition of these students that participate in this varsity sport for the mind. I hope we can continue to support this program by providing space for the sectional, as well as space for the teams to operate in. Thank you.
Unlike Becca and Connor, I didn't help build with the robot. I was part of our business team, where I developed marketing skills, presentation skills, and helped in the development of curriculum, like the Hour of Code that Connor spoke of. Even though I didn't have direct contact with the robot, I still developed the same skills that Connor and Becca did. I gained confidence, I became a leader, and I developed an amazing passion for STEM. A passion that, with my team, I hope to spread to all ages. Our team made this a goal to not only develop a passion, but also give kids the opportunity to use that passion. We first started this with our Tech Adventure, that started four years ago with the EAA, and has since expanded to be a four-day camp, held four times during the summer at the YMCA. At the camp, we teach kids how to program and build NXT robots. The same robot that is used for First Lego League. After they were first introduced to FLL at the camp, many of these kids went on to join FLL teams in the school district and outside the school district. Many of my team members have helped with mentorship of these teams and have since grown the program. Spawning from Tech Adventure came Science Saturdays. Almost every month, we go to the YMCA and teach kids fun science experiments. These fun science experiments allow kids to have fun with science without worrying about grade that's tied with it, like it there is in school. We've also were helped in our development of curriculum by gaining partnerships with Google Maker and Novo PBS Making Stuff. Both of these programs provide us with materials and curriculum to expand our kids' activities. Google Maker Camp helped us by introducing us to paper rockets. What started as a one-day event at the YMCA with their kids' club turned into a whole summer-long, because each time we went, a new group saw us and asked their counselors if we could come and shoot rockets with them also. We shot rockets off with more than 800 students this summer. And we hope that this summer, we'll be able to do it with even more. Besides just the curriculum, we also are very strong in our community service. We have a strong partnership with the food pantry that helps over 2,000 families every month. This past month, we were part of the Food Carrier Union, where we help collect and sort the food at the local food pantry. Now, a lot of us are really passionate about first, but our passion goes beyond just our club. Many of my teammates are involved in band, musicals, forensics, math team, and countless other clubs. We are involved in a lot, and that doesn't mean that our grades will suffer from it. Our team has an unweighted collective GPA of 3.55, a number that we're very proud of, especially since 67% of our students are enrolled in college and AP courses. Now, let me talk about myself a little bit. I was in FLL in seventh grade and developed a passion for STEM. I believe that the only way you could do math every day was by becoming a math teacher, because that's the only place I saw math problems being used. But first opened my eyes up to countless other opportunities. Now, this fall, I'm going to become a badger and be part of the nuclear engineering program at Madison. And I'd like to finish this off by introducing my mother and business mentor, Rebecca Daniels.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Daniels, and as Melissa said, I'm a mother in the program and I'm also a mentor. In 2014, I donated approximately 180 hours for this organization that does not include the two regionals, the world championship, or the Lego League competition that I judged or volunteered at. In 2015, I'm already well on my way to surpassing that number of hours, having also worked at two regionals, the world championship, Lego League. I've used nine of my 17 vacation days at my job to support this organization. So I get a lot of questions from family, friends, and coworkers as to why I gave so much time, money, and of course, vacation days to an organization like this. And I'll tell you about the two children that I have. I have two daughters who both came up through the Wave Robotics program. My youngest, Melissa, I got to hear about some of the fabulous things that she's been able to do. Let me tell you a little bit about my older daughter, Megan. She is a junior at UW-Stout right now, enrolled in the Computer Game Design Program. When she went there as a freshman, in order to help supplement her tuition, she applied for an undergraduate research position. She was interviewing against juniors and seniors that were in the field. Yet, because she had a portfolio that she was able to put together as a marketing student on Wave Robotics, she beat out those juniors and seniors and got the position. Later on, that same year, as a freshman, she decided as a sophomore, she wanted to become an RA. She called me to say she didn't think she was going to get the position, because there were only 16 openings for females, and there had been 80 applicants. She got the job. I think it was probably because of the leadership skills that she gained with being the lead of the marketing team during her four years on Wave. I could stay here and I could talk for hours, talking about the different opportunities that Wave students have had and they've done because of the skills that we've given them by being in this organization. But I can take it a step further. I'm a manager at a local Fortune 500 company, Bemis Healthcare Packaging. As a manager, I get to do a lot of interviewing. For some of our entry-level positions, we interview students, especially this time of year, that are newly college graduates. If I ask them questions, I would put any of our students that are sitting here in front of you today in an interview situation against those college students. While they may not have that college degree, but is needed to actually get the position through the organization, they've gotten the soft skills that employers like myself and colleges are looking for. For example, can you give me an example of when you had to use time management? Why, yes, my team had six weeks to build, design, program, and test a robot for this year's competition. And I did it while maintaining a 3.7 GPA in my AP and college-level cap courses. I had a college student tell me they had two papers due on the same day. Can you give me an example of conflict resolution? Yes, my teammate and I came up with two totally different intake options for last year's robot. And after discussing the pros and cons of building a prototype, we went with my teammate's idea. It was a better design. I had a college grad tell me once that he had a discussion with his roommate about taking out trash. So, our students can give real-life examples of things that they've done in robotics, working within a timeline, working within a budget, demonstrating leadership skills, and showing dedication. Our students get the jobs. They are offered the opportunities because of the skills they learned in this program. As a mother, a mentor, and as a future employer, I want to thank the school board for the space and continued support that allows them to continue. But I would like to ask for one thing. They're getting the recognition in the community and in their future positions. It would be great if they could also get the recognition in the school while they're still there by making this a recognized varsity sport. And on that note, I'd like to introduce Tyler Olds, who's our program director.
Good evening, everybody. I'll stand if you don't mind. My name's Tyler Olds, as Rebecca mentioned, I'm the program director. That's a very fancy title for saying unpaid volunteer who puts in a lot of hours. So, I want to talk to you a little about the program itself, what we're looking at in the future, kind of what our long-range, long-plan term is as well. In the background myself, I've been in FIRST for 15 years. I was a graduate of the applicante program, and that's how we got inspired to start the programs down here. Really, the question was asked, and I get asked this a lot, why do this? Why do the program? Why offer it? And there's a very fundamental answer to that. The United States right now ranks lower than 30th in math and science in the world. So, and I'm sure as educators maybe you know that, but letting that sit into our businesses and our local sponsors, that's a heavy thing to take in, that, you know, America, the great country that we are, is ranked below 30th in math and science in the world. That's a fundamental problem, and FIRST was started to be a culture change agent in that, to inspire kids to get into science, technology, and math, to inspire companies to get engaged, inspire nonprofits to engage with that. So, FIRST in general, and Wave Robotics in general, was formed in Oshkosh to help solve a problem, right? That's what we do with programs. This program in general has grown at leaps and bounds. When we first saw Oshkosh, I came to the school board, we were here about six years ago in our infancy as a program, and we came and we, you know, as a program, we didn't really know what we wanted to do or where we wanted to go. That's changed. We've grown up a lot, and we, obviously, with our success we've had at the world championship, placing second out of 2,900 teams, the amazing feat that that is, we've taken a step back as a program and taken a broad look and said, okay, we have a lot of momentum here. Where do we want to start to go? And we've built a lot of great partnerships with local sponsors and businesses, bringing in, you know, most of our fund development comes from these areas, or from personal fund development, our Tech Adventure camps, other things that we do for that. We started to build relationships with BW Oshkosh, with their engineering programs. It's time to build a relationship more with the Oshkosh area school district. We've come to a point in our program where, in order to have us grow, in order for the Oshkosh area school district, in my opinion, to be able to build on success of having a world-class team, partnerships need to start more on our end, and we hope on you end as well, too, that you'll recognize that as well. Some of the areas that we have right now, we're facing an enrollment issue, it's a good issue. We have too many students wanting to join our program now, and we are looking for more options to provide to students that can get engaged without being left out. You can have programs, and from FIRST with 2,900 programs, there are some teams that have one-shot teacher and five kids. There are teams that have 150 kids. And managing that many students with something like that is a problem that's a program that we need to address, and we're looking for the school district help to do something like that. Options we have for that is we have a junior varsity program that's available. Four of these types of programs is something we're actively looking at. We're looking at spatial needs that we have, funding needs that are looking for moving forward, and help and organizational needs. A lot of our students and Rebecca have talked about different asks that we have and different needs we're looking for. To speak candidly, I mean, we're a group of volunteers, and we want to move past that. We want to be able to formalize and structure and get to a point where we, as a program, can start to build more and more and more. And we look at that as a partnership and an opportunity between us and the Oshkosh area school district. We have very bright young students that come from all different sorts of incomeable households, ethnicity households, and I'm really proud to say that our female rate has gone up every single year that we've been a program to where we're over 33% females in our program as well, to an area that is drastically low in STEM-based fields. So, I want to ask you as a school board to, you know, as we move forward, to look at how we can work together in the future, how we can partner together in the future to bring STEM as a pinnacle in the Oshkosh area. The state of Wisconsin right now has a lot of options with Project Lead the Way and some of the other areas. But right now, from the FIRST program in general, Oshkosh Wave Robotics leads the way for that. And we want to build upon that and work with you guys to make that happen. So, you met a lot of our great students here, and I want to introduce you to one more that we have. Wave Robotics, we meet a lot during this area where we have a very limited amount of time, limited amount of resources to do a lot of things. This student, if we were open 24/7/365, would be there all the time. We give the push and way because he's so engaged and involved, and it's a great thing to have, to have that passion in students. So I'd like to introduce Stephen Fontaine.
Thank you, Tyler. Like Tyler said, I put a lot into this program, but as much as I put into the program, I've gotten even more out. As a student in this program, I get to apply all of the skills that I'm learning in the classroom in an actual, real-life application. I get to take my physics skills and learn about... I get to take my physics skills and learn about linear and circular projectile motion in a real-life application. I get to take my algebra, trigonometry, and calculus skills and use them in a real-life application. I got to take my foreign language skills as a student learning Mandarin at West, and I was able to help a Chinese team whose robot had broken down and help them get back out on the field in the 15 minutes that they had between matches. Along with that, it teaches teamwork, how to be able to work together with a group of people who you didn't know before, come from different schools, come from different cities, some of them, and build a robot that can make second place at a World Championship event in just six weeks. Along with that, it gives students a place to go. It allows them to work with mentors in engineering fields and other good business fields and kind of direct them. Before I entered this program, I had no idea what I wanted to do with my life at all. I knew I was good at math, but that was about it. Leaving this program, I know that I want to program for the rest of my life, and I intend to do that at Milwaukee School of Engineering in the fall semester. What do you get out of this program as a community and a school board? You get to have a chairman's award-winning team. The Chairman's Award is the most prestigious award given out by FIRST. The Chairman's Award honors a team that embodies and sets an image for other teams to exemplify, and also shows the goals of FIRST. This award is measured by the team that has the most measurable impact in the relationship between their participants and their community over a sustained period of time, not just one year. And this team needs to be able to show and demonstrate that they have changed the culture of their community. I have an excerpt here from the 2015 Northern Lights Regional, where our team 2826 had won this award. This is the speech that the judges gave for us. "This team represents FIRST in all that they do. They assist other FIRST teams and their community, too. A team's robot they helped beat them on the field. Almost 20 Lego League teams, they said, recruiting high yield. A holiday parade and an hour of code. Eighteen counties, they've taken their robot on the road. This team helped another to St. Louis this year. Their program impacts 1,000 students each year. This year's Chairman's Award winners never seem to tire. Congratulations, Team 2826, never seems to tire." Thank you for your previous support. Thank you for your consideration for increasing funding and for more student recognition. If you want to see the World Championship Finals team in action, if you want to see the 2015 Northern Lights Regional Chairman's Award-winning team in action, if you want to see your investment in action, please, our meetings are on Tuesday nights at 5:30 right across the street at Tipler. Come visit us. Thank you.
What does 2826 mean?
It's the number of our team that just goes sequentially. As teams register, they get a number, so we relate 2,826 to register.
What do you got to do to get one on our shirts?
You've got to be a mentor. Small donation.
You can get you a shirt.
Donate.
Does anyone have any questions?
Maybe not so much a question as a heaping of praise. Yes. As I've, I don't know the program intimately, but as I've followed the progression, it feels to me like you embody the very best in our community, in our district, among individuals, that this grassroots effort with impassioned people and the students I've met along the way in the program, you know, coupled with a good partnership and hopefully, never stronger partnerships, certainly from the school district standpoint, just represents the pinnacle in my sense as to what can happen here, and you guys have really set that mantle high, so thank you for that. I'm just, I'm moved. Thank you.
Now that you've finished second in the world, is there anything now that you know that you didn't, that you would maybe change on that machine?
There's always room for improvement in our robot. Actually, we do have an off-season event coming up, the Indiana Robotics Invitational, which is kind of like a pro bowl of robotics. They invite a select number of teams, and it's all based on how you're, how you did that year, and we do have a couple modifications in mind for that competition as well, just to continue to improve.
And is there a reason why it's not running at all tonight?
We did a demo last Tuesday, last Monday at the Alex Club, and we-
Does Alex ruin it, doesn't it?
Yeah, we, well, we packed up all of our equipment to run the demo and left half of it at Brother Location.
I have watched this program evolve over the, since the inception, and I have been totally impressed with the volunteering of the adults who have stepped forward in this community. I know that Tyler has been with us since the beginning, and he's probably the one that I've seen the most, but I know that many other adults have played a big hand in where you are today. When I attended the open house that you had at Tipler, I was so touched and so impressed with the, with every person I encountered. We were adults coming in randomly, asking questions, I'm sure it seemed like, and every one of you was so articulate, and you had those skills of looking people directly in the eye when you talked with them. And you were so enthusiastic and so knowledgeable, using vocabulary words that, some of which I've never heard before. Exactly what they were. And there was room for the person who was, who wanted to use their English skills, and those who wanted to market, and those who wanted to program computers, and those who wanted to drive the machine, or those who wanted to design the parts on the three-dimensional printer. It was to a person, you were just so impressive, and I've seen you out in the community at various events, volunteering your time, wearing those shirts proudly, and making sure that the community who's given to you sees that you are also giving back in so many ways. The numbers of students you've cited tonight that you've impacted in terms of, whether it's the rockets or the programming that you've done, is just totally impressive. One thought that I had when this program was in its infancy was designing that into the school day, so that an instructor might be freed up at least part of the load, and that we might also be able to change the teaching day of a person, so that it didn't start at 8:30 now, but maybe would have started a couple of hours later, so it could go into what people traditionally call after-school time, so that that individual would be able to interact. I'm sure there are more creative ideas than what I've suggested here, but I think there are some ways that administration, working with Tyler and the lady who's given so freely of her time and her vacation days and her talents and her funds, could help take this to the next level. But we've seen your hardware, we've seen the trophies and things you've brought back, and you've certainly done a lot to put Oshkosh on the map and to help us celebrate the accomplishments of our students, which should be the number-one job of the school board to promote student learning, and you've certainly taken that to great heights in terms of future career plans. Every one of you could tell me what you had in mind for a career after high school. Every one of you had a plan for getting there in terms of where you plan to go to post-secondary education, and that's something you don't always see or hear with young people. So, I just want to add to what Steve did. You have certainly made your district proud and your high schools proud, and thank you for what you've done for Oshkosh.
I would just like to add, I've had the privilege of being with you a number of times, and I had a chance to, at your open house, visit with a number of you at Tipler, but what made me most proud was to be able to go into the ice arena at Mylma Manor, the University of Minnesota, Marietta Arena, and to go down on the floor and be welcomed by you into your booth, and to have one of my former high schools located next to, right next to you, Cooper High School in New Hope, Minnesota, and there speaking with pride about, you are associated with that. Well, I can claim no special privilege, but it was great joy to observe and watch and see you engaged as you were in the competition in Minneapolis, and to be welcomed by you as I travel through our schools, acknowledging and having you acknowledge and talk to me about what you're doing with robotics, and then the joy of being out at the parking lot to welcome you back from St. Louis and enjoying so much the joy that you, your families, and all of you bring to each other with the knowledge that you clearly are representing as well, not just today, but as you move on to post-secondary institutions. The reputation of your preparation in the school district will benefit future generations of students, because they will say, as they look at admissions committees, wow, we've got great students coming from Oshkosh now, we have a great chance in the future. What a wonderful way to build momentum for your follow-up students that will be coming and following you to institutions. That reputation, along with number one, those soft skills, the people's skills that you have of engagement are just tremendous. Congratulations, so proud of you.
And you guys are welcome to stay if you wish, or if you want to split and enjoy the weather outside.
At this time, superintendent's report will be up.
The superintendent's good news report for this evening and from the activities that have occurred in the last two weeks for the 27th of May. First of all, Oshkosh West students and staff supported families living with autism by participating in a campaign during the month of April, which raised $1,253, thanks to Melissa Mency and the Encompass Program for organizing this event. Middle School eighth-grade band earned a first rating from all three judges when they performed at the Kokona, in Kokona, at the Wisconsin School Music Association Concert Band Festival on May 1st. Congratulations. Students from Washington Elementary visited the residence of Lake Shore Manor to share May baskets and poems. South Park news. At a recent staff collaboration, staff at South Park were able to determine that not only did they meet, but they actually exceeded their school's PBIS goals and were excited with the great progress that had been made with the Panther Way in its second year. South Park recently held their family, they received Fine Arts Night, and they were able to provide a new book pre-charge to each student in attendance. Families were able to participate in several events, and students were able to have their artistic and musical talents on display, showing their artwork, cake decorating skills, playing in the pep band and orchestra, and performing in a talent show. The South Park Problem-Solving and Design Class designed and built CO2 cars and CAD software, 3D models, and 2x4s. Students learned how to convert feet per second into miles per hour and compared them against each other for the fastest, fastest, if that's a word, and best-looking cars. South Park Spring Choir Concert was held earlier this month to celebrate with their students' hard work and wish eighth-grade students the very best as they head to their high school years. On May 15th, South Park eighth-grade students traveled to Milwaukee's JA Finance Park, where they learned about the importance of budgeting. Students created a budget based on hypothetical life situation to help them realize the need to take control of their financial futures. Congratulations to the Oshkosh West High School senior, Ashley Rumro, for recently signing a letter of intent to play basketball at Silver Lake College next season. Congratulations also to Oakwood students who entered into the Oshkosh Public Library's Creative Book Contest. Check out the slide with, on the website, to see all of the winning entries. Lots of participation of students from that program. Celebrating abilities, rallying everyone. Care Day was held at Oshkosh West High School this past week. The track and carnival events were an opportunity for students with adaptive physical education to engage in and with regular education peers, and rallied everyone by celebrating their abilities in a fun, physical environment. Thank you to all who made this event such a great success. Lakeside construction continues. Picture here are photos of progress made at Lakeside Elementary Project during the week of May 18th. It's eighth week of construction. Progress is continuing. We had good news last week, we're a week ahead of construction, but I understand from Jim, the rain of yesterday slowed it down by one day, so we should be about four days ahead right now. So, Oshkosh West Technology and Engineering students had the opportunity to partner with area businesses for a three-week period to learn masonry skills, thanks to those who helped make this opportunity happen. Carl Traeger Middle School students celebrated its fourth annual literacy and laughter week from May 4th through the 8th, celebrating with many events. Students collected 1,460 books to donate to children at Mercy Medical Center and the Winnebago Correctional Institute and Winnebago Human Services. The students who donated the books won most of the five gift cards, Paper Tiger Bookstore, and teams collecting most of the books, which were also treated with a pizza lunch. As part of the literacy and laughter week, students at Traeger Middle School held a home base reading relay, where students were challenged to recall all week during home base for a chance to win Laffy Taffy. They also held home base Scrabble challenges for the word and most points and the largest, longest word. Oshkosh West hosted the Second Multicultural Night on May 8th with the theme of holidays and traditions. Dinner consisted of Indian, Spanish, Mong, Mexican, and Thai foods, and entertainment was provided by cultural dance groups from the community and the school. And here is a list of activities in the past several weeks. The bookings at this time of the year for the superintendent never end. It is almost seven days a week, but it's on a continuous program, and it's wonderful to celebrate with our students, our staff, and our administration, all of the wonderful things going on in the school district as we celebrate near the end of the school year. Thank you to all. At this time, I would like to have folks, Mary Yang, our teacher at Oshkosh North High School, and a few of the students who have been involved in the Community mural project to come forward to talk about their initiative. Mary?
Should we sit down?
Right, sure.
I think I'll just stand and kind of introduce the students, but you guys can go ahead and have a listen. My name is Mary Yang, and I'm one of the art teachers over at Oshkosh North High School. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Jim Evans and Mr. Stan Matt for allowing us to come in and share an exciting partnership that is taking place between our schools and the community. What is quickly becoming known as the Event City mural first began as Oshkosh's second community mural, the first one being the panoramic painting that was once displayed on the side of the David Sparr Building located in downtown Oshkosh. In recent years, it was removed due to its deteriorating state of the pan house, but this new mural, which is conceived through a joint effort between local artist and community member Rich Norenberg and Oshkosh Area School District students, will replace the sign of the old mural. So today, I have brought along a few students who have dedicated a good portion of their time and outside of the classroom toward this project to talk a little bit about the new mural that will be displayed soon this summer, and share their experiences while working on the project, so.
All right, I'm sorry, a little nervous right here. All right, so hi, my name is Josie, and I am a sophomore at Oshkosh North High School, and I am currently enrolled in the Communities Program, Communities One Program at Oshkosh North High School, that's how I first got involved. The new mural project was first brought up with the Communities Program. And we have an excerpt of that on the next slide. And what I learned from this experience was we learned, in communities, we learned to work in teams, and we learned to work in communities, and learn all of our social skills, and then we can use them in the real world and in the future. So it's like a video. It should play if you click on it. Oh, no! Should have tested this before.
For being at several city meetings, that's all. They often go.
What if you close out the presentation, will it come on? Come on, computer.
Oh, you need to on a separate screen in the back if you escape out of this. It's the back one.
Oh, there it is.
Behind it.
Hey, there it is.
Students in Oshkosh are developing life skills while providing inspiration for a new mural.
Good morning, guys. We're here at First United Methodist Church where community members are packing here along with students. Students are putting their ideas of a certain topic of Oshkosh's history as inspiration for that mural, and they're carrying around these community members, carrying around this yellow sheet. They're grading these students, providing them feedback. So we're going to hear a couple pitches this morning. We've got two sophomores, Emily and Kirsten. Emily, let's start with you. Your project is on theaters, and there were so many theaters in Oshkosh back in the day.
Yeah, there were 13 different locations where your, where, and 27 different names.
You were telling me earlier, theaters were very important back in the day, especially during the Depression.
Yes, during the Great Depression, it was a great escape for people to get away and escape the stress that there was in the outside world. People would go to these movie theaters all the time and forget about the Great Depression.
Now, there were so many back in the day, and your mom actually remembers going to them, right?
Yes, every Sunday she would go with her grandparents, and she would watch John Wayne movies.
So this picture here, this is what you kind of want on the mural. Why did you pick this one?
I picked this picture because it was one of the fanciest ones, and it was the best one I could find, because they were really hard to find, but I did find this one, and it was great resolution, so I picked it.
How interesting. Thank you so much. We got to make our way to Kirsten over here. I'm just down this side. Kirsten, you need your project on a very well-known icon if you can't figure it out. Kirsten, tell me about it.
This is the paint and art center that was built in the late 1920s, 1927, and it's here to give the community lots of art.
Very much so. So this was built in like the 1920s, and its mission has still stayed the same. That was what you were telling me earlier.
Yes, they wanted to give it to the community so that they could be educated on art, and they, the family, the parents gave their art to this building so that others could come and learn and see it.
And you wanted to pick this one because you see this building every single day.
Yeah, I thought it'd be really cool to learn a little bit about a building that I see every day and learn what they came for us.
Well, thank you so much, ladies. You guys did great. Again, come on down. This gallery walk goes until about 9:30, so there's a bunch of different topics. We learned about breweries this morning, entertainments, ice sailing, all kinds of things. So just head to our website, fox11online.com. That mural, hopefully, if everything goes well, should be up in downtown Oshkosh by about next May. So feel forward to that. We'll revisit it then, definitely. Thanks, Paulie.
It also just occurred to me, I watched this video before I came here to rehearse a little bit, and I said the Fine Art Center, and that was not me, and I actually had the Grand Opera House.
I first heard about the mural while listening to the announcements, and I thought, since I'm interested in art, why don't I go there and learn a little bit about this and what's going on? So I got a bunch of friends of mine, and we went down, and we went and we met up with a bunch of people, some local artists, who were talking about this future plan that we, we have a mural eventually coming up that we, as Oshkosh North students, would make ourselves. And that interests me, and I realized that if I was here, I would end up making a huge impact on what will be hanging in Oshkosh in front of the whole entire public and tourists see. So every Monday, we would come in and we would learn about putting together compositions. We put together a bunch of photos, like the ones you see in that picture, and we scattered them around, and we planned out what would look great in the composition, and we used all sorts of different types of exercises and stuff to learn how to put together compositions and learn about depth. So as an artist, I learned a lot about depth and working with other people and collaborating my art experiences with other people that you can't really do anywhere else. So I learned a lot, and it is exciting to see this coming together.
Great.
All right, so my name is Catalina Law. I'm a sophomore at Oshkosh North High School. So this design up there was made in early February, and this was a time where not many people had enough time to come to the meetings, because everybody was involved with extracurricular activities. So I came one day, and they were kind, they kind of had like a blank sheet they still were kind of ebbly about like the picture that they wanted. And I had this idea that was kind of like in the back of my mind that I kind of stored away, and I didn't think it was good enough until like I actually like said it out loud, and then I made a sketch of it, and then I brought it in, and it seemed like everybody seemed to like it. And then we gave it to an artist, and then he advanced it a little bit more with the help of, I think Josie, right?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, she divided it into 13 boards, so we can, so we were able to like square it out to use grids, so everything was in line perfectly. And we worked with local artists like Rich Norenberg and Paul Schmidt, and they, they put a lot of dedication, and they were very active throughout the whole thing. What I learned from this experience is the dedication that you need to put in something this big for the community and to, you know, make, make the community more like, I don't know how, say, like, more in touch with like the youth, because this was brainstormed by the youth, and it kind of connects to like all the kids that are going to be the next generation of this town. And I think teamwork is also what I experienced. There was a lot of teamwork going around, and as you've seen like the video on the next slide, working with the local artists, like it was, it was something different for me to experience, and I'm pretty sure it was different for you guys too. To see talented people like just kind of drawing just a little few lines and then making it look like already half-done, because they're so good at it. So this is just a nice little video of our art studio.
A little bit of background on this video while we get it to load again. All of us students took a Monday off school and just kind of went to this room down by Carmel Crisp, and the little cul-de-sac you play there, there's like a empty studio right there, and we just filled it with boards of boards that are all white. And we drew on them with pencil, and then we started painting the lines, and that's what you'll see in the video. And I just want to say a quick thank you to all of our partners. To, without this, this wouldn't even be possible. The mural would never have been the concept in the first place. So all the shops at the Cindy Center where we are stationed, SOAR, Oshkosh Community Foundation, the First United Methodist Church, the Public Museum in the library, and also the Art House, which supplies some of the paint. Then we also wanted to invite you to come help us paint the mural, because it's open to the community to come paint. You can come on Monday from 4 to 8 at the Grand for School, or on Saturday from 7 to 9, which is a really nice time for everybody, which usually works out really well. It's in the Cindy Center, like I mentioned, it's right next to Planet Park and Carmel Crisp. And even if you don't feel like painting, you can just come in and see how we've been doing. And if you do feel like painting, it's really easy, everyone who is there is really nice, the local artists are always willing to help, and there's always at least someone down there every day, so, or at least every day we're painting, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that Mr. Mack has painted on this mural.
I was there, but I didn't think I was, I was dressed, I'm going to get there yet. I was dressed in the right.
Wrong clothes, these.
I have to bring the painting shirt, I promise. I will be doing that. But what an exciting, I've, I've been able to see this from its original concept back in the art classrooms at North High School, all the way through to the construction now of the sections down by Carmel Crisp, and just an outstanding experience. We are demonstrating for one of our newest board members that we can be STEAM. We had science earlier, and we're getting to demonstrate STEAM all in the same night, both with recognizing artists plus the mural effort. STEAM is showing up loud and clear here, and we go from that to sailing. Thank you so much.
Other reports, committee chairs.
We have sailing quiz. Steve is going to complete the superintendent's report.
Yes, as Mr. Mack said, I just want to do a little recap on what's ahead for the spring through summer through fall. We've been doing this annually where we just give a little update on what's happening on the water and around the water and in the schools in Oshkosh. And I've asked Dr. Eric Smeltney, Corey Vonfield, and Sarah Adamet to join and just kind of weigh in a little bit with how it's playing out in various facets. And just in brief, we started yesterday with Webster Stanley STEM students, sixth-grade STEM students, after a year-long project, and then we roll through the end of next week, full summer of sailing mostly in Oshkosh, a lot of wrecked apartment sailing, lighted schoolhouse, then fall, of course, we hit it with kind of district-wide fifth-grader sailing. And I, tonight, seeing the presentations we've seen, I feel like saying, well, we have this little program that somebody aspires to be like these other guys. It's a great thrill, it's a great honor, and I always feel like, looking back at what we've done over eight years, could have never happened in another community, in another district. I really believe that we've had an administration that's been very supportive, we've had teachers and professionals in the classrooms that have been very supportive. And then, of course, we have unwavering volunteers like Dr. Eric and Corey's leadership on Lighted Schoolhouse and Sarah Adamet's leadership on STEM field. So I'll turn it over to them just to weigh in.
I didn't either.
I know, and so Kim Brown's working right now, maybe on, I put together very quickly, actually, 10 minutes maybe it took, to just pull some of the pictures and things from the last two days of sailing. It was amazing to see what the sixth graders at Webster Stanley were able to do with their sail design, I think with Steve's help and then Jared Phillips, who's teaching the STEM course right now, they got out on the water, and I don't know that they even had a lot of confidence in the sails that they, that they put together, but. We must have two of them playing somewhere. So what we have here is just really short. Do you want me to play it? Is it working? Is it playing or is it just?
We're going to find out.
Regatta in the Rain. The kids didn't notice, right? It was fantastic.
It still needs to be edited, but. So that was just to kind of give you a little flavor for what the students were able to see through the culmination, really, of all of the work that they've been putting into the STEM course throughout the year. Actually, we're able to test them out yesterday.
Nice leadership, Sarah. Just fantastic.
And then piggybacking off the program that they're doing at Webster Middle School, Lighted Schoolhouse has been lucky enough to.
Lighted Schoolhouse has been lucky enough to partner with IYSO for the last, this will be our third summer. We actually had a surplus in our grant funding for two years, which was phenomenal. And Steve and his crew came in and were able to actually sail with our third through fifth graders seven times over the course of those summers. This year, our surplus is a little smaller, but what we're doing is we're doing a concentrated STEM sailing course, and we're modifying the middle school curriculum, and we're bringing in that same idea to our third through fifth graders. So, with Lighted Schoolhouse this year in August, we are getting our kids out on the water for four hours a day for eight days, with a little bit of classroom time in there as well. And I think we're talking about squeezing in some solar power, motor function, and I'm really excited, really excited for what the kids are going to get to see and explore this summer.
And as a representative of ThetaCare, we're, again, very happy to be sponsoring this, and I think we're very pleased with, and I personally am very pleased with kind of district's response to kind of getting kids more active. I know with Stan's leadership with the, some of the Way to the Valley initiatives, that the Oshkosh District has been very, very open to try and do things and doing new things. And recently, we, the sailing program was featured in the newsletter for this group called, what was it, Student Alliance, or Student Alliance for Student Activities, or things like that, which is a national group. So, in addition to some of the other great things that we've just heard about, national recognition, I think kind of our ideas on getting kids active outside is something that seems to be relatively revolutionary and well-received, so we're very excited to be happily supporting this.
I would just like to add, Director Lyson regularly passes credit on to all kinds of other people, but without his inspiration and his family's investment of time in this entire effort, it just wouldn't be. And Steve sets the entire effort in motion and passes credit on to all kinds of other people, but it's Director Lyson's leadership that makes it happen.
Very cool.
People want to see sailing, and I think it's all this week and later next week.
Yeah, through that and the next week.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Not really.
Doctor said so.
Doctor said.
Doctor said, yes.
At this time, we have other reports, committee chairs, do you guys have any? Barbara?
Thank you, President Dito. The Policy and Governance Committee met on Tuesday, May 19th. We started with the presentation by the two activities directors, Brad Judorsky and Craig Leader, actually Brad was there on behalf of both of them. Brad had pointed out some proposed changes in the 2015-16 High School Co-Curricular Handbook. I'll just hit a couple of these. One was the addition of mock trial language and information. Another section was for behavior standards for such areas as honor society and student government. There was language added for students to earn their way off of grade checks, and cheating language was changed so that it would be easier to understand and handle cheating incidents. We also had a presentation by Richard Zimmern from Neola, who represents the group whom the board had contracted with to help update our policies, board policies. Mr. Zimmern talked about the next steps for the Neola District policy updates, explaining that team spent eight full days going through the district's current policies, comparing them to Neola language, and intertwining them to help compile what will become the first draft of the 400-plus policies that will return to the full board in a few months for approval. Before final approval, the board will work through the policies and determine any changes they would like to make, so, kind of a future agenda item for all of us to think ahead about. A number of policies, such as the 17-page Family Medical Lead Act, have state or federally mandated language that can't be changed. The entire policy book will have to be approved by the board at one time, rather than in sections, because it would be too confusing and difficult to mandate policies from several different sources that could be contradicting one another. Once the policy book has been approved, a printed version in a three-ring binder will come to the superintendent's office and will be uploaded to the website. Neola will handle the website, including future changes, and asks that updates to policies will be provided two times a year, and if there are any special updates that are time-sensitive, they will send them to the district office. They also suggest submitting board minutes of every one of our meetings for them to review to make sure there are any policy implications. We also talked about Policy 225, the evaluation of the superintendent. The superintendent's job description has not been updated since 1997. The evaluation process should be tied to that once it is updated. In the past, schools have been the main focus of the evaluation, but there are many additional aspects of the position that should be included in the overall evaluation and considerations. Richard Zimmern, who was at the meeting, has been working with a group at CISA VI on the creation of a model based on Charlotte Danielson's work for superintendent evaluation. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards also has been engaged in this kind of work. So, the committee recommended that the committee chair, namely me, have further discussions with Superintendent Mack and Board President Steve Dito on how to proceed with this information. The last major topic that we addressed was use of chemicals on school lawns. Jim Fox discussed a concern on chemical use on school lawns. Jim has been in dialogue with colleagues from around the state through a roundtable, and it was determined that districts involved in the discussion seem to be using the same practices and processes as we have. Jim also contacted universities to inquire relative to their practices. UW-Oshkosh currently has a test plot area designated to determine if an alternative to fertilizers may work and may be used in the future. Jim explained that all commercial applications are required to follow a strict list of restrictions with applications at certain times mixed a certain way and notifying the public with signage. The district does follow the State of Wisconsin's recommended guidelines. Neola is the only state currently working, I'm sorry, Indiana is the only state currently working with Neola that had a policy relative to this. Recommendation of the committee last week was that Jim Fox will develop a policy for review at a future meeting, and Superintendent Mack would carry the discussion of the citywide PTO meeting on May 26th, which happened, and there were a number of suggestions offered as to alternatives for dealing with lead control, among other things. The next committee meeting has been set for Tuesday, August 18th, at 10:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports of committees? Allison?
Yep, Facilities and Finance met on May 21st. We started with the Elementary Task Force. Three representatives from that task force, Michelle Klett, James Warren, and Tim Foye, shared concerns with the committee about FIAED time. I don't know if you guys remember this, I think we've all talked about it before. Essentially, our elementary teachers are teaching one of the three 25-minute periods of PE every week, and they're not licensed PE teachers, and it's overloading their time that they could really be using doing other things, mostly prep. And so, in order to get those 25 minutes back, the proposal is to then get real PE teachers to teach that last 25 minutes per week. We would need five district-wide for the 14 elementary schools. The proposal is to have four regular PE and one adaptive PE at a cost of $325,000. This would help teachers, they're seeing a huge increase in testing, they are having more meetings each week, they're seeing increases in behavioral issues, and they have a lot more parental involvement at the elementary level. So, they're really, they're swamped, and they're drowning, and they are struggling, as we all know. So, another fact that they shared with us is that 21 weeks of the school year for kindergarten through second grade teachers is spent one-on-one testing. 21 weeks is spent one-on-one testing. So, they need some help. They were able to get $32,000 for the Infinite Campus when it was implemented for training. It allowed them a sub for 1.25 days, so out of the 21 weeks, we gave them a day and a quarter. So, they need more help. We have about $5 million deficit, so it's not looking good that they're going to get funding. Sushnoor suggested that maybe we would attach that FIAED proposal to a referendum in the future, and there was also a question of whether or not adaptive FIAED piece could be utilized differently. Right now, we have, sometimes we have as many as two adaptive FIAED teachers at an elementary school at the same time. So, that seemed like maybe there was a better use of resources, and Mike Nolte has offered to look into that for us. The Budget Variance Report was a written report, and we didn't have any questions on that. Update on Oaklawn's spending. The latest development is that the person who owned the property next door has passed away, and the person who is, the executor of his will is in, has come to the district and has expressed a desire to have the school district obtain that property. So, now, the school district is going to the city, and we're going to talk about some kind of a partnership to clean up, mainly to clean up the property, and then probably turn it into some kind of a park. Let's see, Global Academy was next, we heard about that in our last board meeting, so they were just coming to follow up, and that's a referendum, sorry, resolution at this point. The proposal is that we would have those teachers teach four hours a day for the next three years for that Global Academy portion. And these teachers also are helping students that are not part of the Global Academy get their GAC, Global Certificate, and so, they just needed the extra, they need that funding for the next three years. Brad Judorsky came to ask for permission to waive the bid requirements for new starting blocks in the pool at West. They've used walters in the past, and they would like to just have the authority to use them in the future, and they are not using school funds, these are all fund-raised, funds that were raised, and it'll be about $13,000, so we gave him permission to proceed. Summer projects, Jim Fox updated us, we are on track and within budget on everything, and as of that day, we were a week ahead of schedule at Lakeside, so. Okay, last two, Fund 80. The DPI, I'm sorry, the state has cracked down on ways that we can use Fund 80 balance. We have about $650,000 in that fund, and we have been given a one-time opportunity to move funds out of Fund 80 into Fund 21. So, we are proposing to use $200,000 for the roof at the rec center, and then move $150,000 into Fund 21 in case we are able to obtain property or something of that nature. And then, the last discussion was on the resolution to leave the state property fund. Essentially, there's two different funds, we're looking at joining the other one, and there's no, there's no negative consequences for doing that. The meeting adjourned at 9:00, the next meeting is scheduled for June 18th. Thanks.
Yes, I have a report on the Education Committee that met a couple Tuesdays ago on the 18th. Being that there are two new people on there, we had some introductions of each other, and also Patty Anderson Schuh from the Chamber was there, and it turns out that she was a classmate of mine in high school, so that was kind of cool. A lot of this stuff is on, we're going to be doing it tonight, but we had some particular adoptions, adoptions that we were going through, converting AP Computer Science to Project Lead the Way Computer Science, which is basically putting engineering in with that, addition of FIAED minutes at the elementary school level, and impact on staffing and budget. And then, there were some charter school things we're moving, which, again, we're going to be doing tonight, and moving the ALPS program to Tipler, and dissolving of Oakwood Charter, and Shapiro Brain-Based Instruction Laboratory contract will also be renewed, which we're doing tonight. And also, I thank the staff to kind of meet my needs of changing the meetings to morning, and we decided to meet on the first Thursday of each month, which meant we would have been meeting right away, so we decided we didn't need to do that, and luckily, because of July being a nice vacation month, we're not going to meet now until August. So, our next meeting is August 6th at 8:30 in the morning, and as always, the public is invited to attend those meetings.
Thank you, Jim. Are there any other committee reports?
You know, there's a place for the president's report. I just have an observation, watching what happened here this evening, incredible engagement with students, leading of students, art awards, robotics, STEM, STEAM, art, sailing, things that are well-directed and well-thought-out. And I received this letter, which was not well-thought-out, at least on my part, from one of our students. Dear President Dito, thank you for the opportunity to say the pledge allegiance at the school board meeting. I like the word that you used, tedious, because it starts with a T like my name. After the pledge, I learned what tedious means from my dad. I shared the new word with my class, my fourth grade class, and Mrs. Cordes has now added it to our word wall. Thank you, Tristan Johanknick.
Well done, Steve.
My point is, is as a board, obviously, we affect student learning at no small level as a board. As parents, we obviously do that as well. What I found interesting about this is that, when we're not, stuff that we don't even notice, stuff that we don't take, see any relevance in, can affect somebody in a positive way, so, I guess I will learn from that and try to use some words like that on occasion, so. Anyway, at this time, non-agenda-related public forum, is there anybody here for that? I don't see anybody. Gender-related public forum, I do not see anybody here for that. Consent resolution agenda, for consent agenda, the board has been furnished with a background material on each item, or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled from the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. So far, we have Resolution 7, 10, and 11 that have been pulled. Is anybody else, want to have something else addition? Not hearing any. At this time, then we will consider approval of the minutes of April 27, 2015, special board meeting, board reorganization, number two, minutes of April 29, 2015, regular board meeting, number three, minutes of May 13, 2015, regular board meeting, number four, bills payable, number five, personnel, A appointments, resignations, retirements, and salaries scheduled, number six, creation of Fund 46, number eight, 2015-16 curriculum adoptions, number nine, ALPS contract update, number 12, Fox Valley Technical College Riverside Program contract, number 13, certification of high school graduates for 2014-2015, number 14, school lunch fees changes for 2015-16, number 15, funding needs for OESD innovation for 2015-2016, and number 16, extended contract dollars for agricultural staff. Call the board, please.
Yes. Herzog, I, Lamburger?
Aye.
Lamburger, I. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, I. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, I. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, I. Evan?
Aye.
Evans, I. Gardner?
Aye.
Turner, I. Herzog?
Present.
Herzog, present. Motion carries.
Resolution number 10, be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve agreements with 4K and early childhood agencies to enter into contracts as filed with the Secretary of the Board of Education.
Second.
Discussion, please.
I had asked that this be pulled. I have been on the Jacob Shapiro Brain-Based Instruction Laboratory School Governing Board since 2008, and I've had the privilege of chairing that group for, I don't know, three or four years. I did have a hand in putting this together. I do not benefit in any way from this, nor do any of my relatives or friends. But I just wanted to be very open and inform the board that I plan to vote present on this item, so that there should not be any issue with conflict of interest. Thank you.
Do I have to do the same thing? Because I'm on the governing board, too. I didn't even think about that.
I don't know.
Well.
I have given some, I have given some help with, or some ideas on language for this particular contract, so.
Okay, I did not.
That's why I chose to.
Okay.
Any further questions? Hearing none, call the board, please.
Lamburger?
Aye.
Lamburger, I, Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, I, Dito?
Aye.
Dito, I, Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, I, Evans?
Aye.
Evans, I, Garner?
Aye.
Garner, I, Herzog?
Present.
Herzog, present, motion carries.
Resolution number 10. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve agreements with 4K and early childhood agencies to enter into contracts as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
I ask that this be pulled. There is a few Ts to cross and a couple of Is to dot yet on some of these. I would like to make a motion and amendment to this, that we table this into the June 3rd meeting.
So moved. Second.
Discussion on this at all? Hearing none, can we vote on the amendment? To table, to table, to postpone?
Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, I, Dito?
Aye.
Dito, I, Eliason?
Aye.
Evans, I, Evans?
Aye.
Evans, I, Garner?
Aye.
Garner, I, Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, I, Lamburger?
Aye.
Lamburger, I, motion carries.
Resolution number 11. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the instructional materials and student fee schedule for 2015-16 school year as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I was one of, one of the people who had asked that this be pulled. I have supported this at the Facilities and Finance meeting. I supported it at the last meeting that we had. I commend the work of the staff going forward with this. My one concern is the increase in the, the proposed increase for elementary students. Before coming to this meeting this evening, I was at a board meeting of the Oshkosh Area United Way, and we heard a report on the impact of poverty on women and children in the community. And I understand that fees are waived for people on free and reduced lunch, but we do have a sizable number of people in our community who are just above that qualification line. Doubling of that fee, I just have some real concerns about that. As I recall the faces of the young families that pass on my sidewalk every day, usually with two, three, and four children. I don't know what the financial impact would be if it were a lesser increase, but I just have concerns right now about doubling that fee at the elementary level.
It's a very, excuse me, a very fair question. Really, it is not doubling the fee. What it is doing is that money is being spent towards materials that each family is paying for out of pocket. That is not considered within that normal twenty-five-dollar fee piece. And actually, what we were able to do, and we're still working on some of those pieces, is dry erase markers are just one example. And if you're a parent on the board and you've had to go out to buy dry erase markers, they're very expensive. And typically, when you need the pack of five or 10, I have two elementary children, and last year, I think the bill just for expo markers was fifteen dollars. And I ended up with like five markers for each of them. And as you compile that, that's just one small piece of that twenty-five dollars. But as a school district, when we are able to purchase that at a higher rate, I think we were looking at purchasing approximately twenty thousand expo markers for elementary students to cover for the year, when we can get them at a sale cost of forty-six cents per marker versus what we are outlaying for families, it is a cost savings. So while the fees look like it's higher, they're really putting money in different venues to do that and we can get better pricing. Also included within that, when you go to elementary registration, you're also paying besides that registration fee in the past for planners or agendas or homeschool folders. So in essence, families were writing one or two checks or paying two or three times on top of the instructional fee for items. We wanted to make this easy for the user and for our families, that when you come in, you are paying one lump sum and you are able to take care of all of those multiple steps along the line, and you're getting a better price on what you were eventually having to pay for anyway. So I guess that's the smaller portions, and I don't know if my counterparts want to comment on some of those.
I think the only thing I'd add to that is we did kind of bring that up at Facilities and Finance, and there was a desire at that time to try and keep the numbers equitable, the fifty dollars equal across the board, just so that it was a little bit more consistent. And also, remember that it does change the game a little bit. In the past, dry erase markers, construction paper, student planners, et cetera, would be paid for by families whether they were free-reduced or not. And at this point, those families who are free-reduced would have those waived. So that's a little bit, that's part of the equation as well.
I'm looking at it, and I understand and I agree, that the fee schedule needs to be simplified, you know, going in and doing the one fee for everything. I still have, you know, the high school level, I understand, because it's a, you know, a fifteen-hour difference, and the student ID is twelve dollars alone. And at the middle school level, I understand, you know, because of the ID also. I agree with Barbara. I don't, I don't understand the twenty-five-dollar jump. You know, it is a doubling. As a parent looking at it simplified, it is doubling. And I know, maybe you're saying it's not because, you know, of the materials that we're purchasing for them and giving to them, but when a parent walks in that door, you know, and they're looking at that, they're going to look at it as double. I also have children in the district, and I have two in grade school, and these fees of what I was told, I don't agree with them. The folders, I have never personally, in the seventeen years that my kids have been in the schools, have never spent ten dollars on folders. And dry erase markers, they are expensive, but you buy the pack of four, and I did quite a bit of research for it, came and looked them out, they're five ninety-nine. You can get them, and during these times of years when parents are purchasing these things at Walmart or Target or wherever they might be going, they're getting really, really good sales. And then also, the student planners are three dollars. So what this adds up to doesn't, for me, justify a twenty-five-dollar jump in that increase. So that's where, where my concern is, is when, in children, when parents go in there, they have, usually, you have, because it's five grades, you have multiple children together. And when they're looking at that family cap, you know, it is almost doubling that family cap, too. You know, you went from eighty to a hundred and fifty. So I'm just concerned about the families that are above that line, when this is twenty-five dollars, we're not giving them a choice, but when they go shopping for these materials, they could get less expensive stuff. They could use, you know, they don't have to spend, it wouldn't be twenty-five dollars for them to walk in the store. So I guess that's where my concern is, is I don't, I'm having a hard time understanding. I get the big picture. I agree that there needs to be some streamline through the schools, but I don't understand a twenty-five-dollar jump on the grade school level where the other two are fifteen. You know, that's where my concern lies.
And I think historically, when we were looking at what the original fee structure was for elementary, it was lower and it never really.
It's never risen two years?
Increased, along with the other levels. And Dave might be able to speak more to that historical piece for that, or, you know, other members in the room.
Yeah, historically, usually, we spent most of our time on the high school fees, and those would get ticked up. And how the process worked, I don't know how it worked prior to 2010, but, but since that time, what we would normally do is send information out to the building administrators and say, here's the fee structure we're taking forward. Please take a look at the costs. If there's some adjustments that can be warranted, let us know. Make sure that whoever's submitting that has a rationale and some information behind it, and then we would typically do that. Almost exclusively, we got input from middle and high school, at least in the time I've been here. We've not received much in the way of elementary input to raise that fee, because the fee was very, it was just the instructional materials fee. So it probably didn't go up as much.
Can you also share with everybody here that what we discussed in Facilities and Finance is that you guys did a lot of research and you went to other school districts in our area. What are their fee structures like and what are they paying at the elementary level? Just so we have a comparison.
Do we have any of that?
We had it at one time. I know, I've heard it before. So I didn't mean to surprise you, sorry.
Well, it's all right.
Yeah, well, I apologize to administration. I've, I've been stewing over this for several days, and I do appreciate the work that went into this, but when I went to the United Way board meeting tonight and heard that piece on families and poverty, it, I don't know, it just confused me on this issue, I guess.
Well, the options, you know, the options that are kind of in front of you at this point are to continue with the proposal, you know, that's certainly one option. To reduce the fee, that's certainly another option. A third option would be to possibly throw in some of the other components such as headphones or recorders. And the reason those weren't put in there is because those don't equally impact all kids in grades K through five. So we kind of chose, well, should we really throw those in? Because those really, you can't say that's going to impact everybody. It will if you stay with us in K through five, because at some point, you're going to need a recorder. But that is a third option. So you can either reduce the fee increase, you could go with the fee that we currently have proposed, or we could throw some other components in that would defray some of the costs. The potential, I guess I'd say downside of reducing the fee increase is, given the fact that we're going to be waiving for free-reduced and having the family cap in place, we might not be revenue-neutral. Now, there's no way for us to know for sure until we go through really one cycle of this, just because fees are such a hit-or-miss type of thing. There's no way to get some real solid data on that. But that was our only concern at that point.
That was, that was kind of my next question. I mean, if, if we were to reduce that fee, I'm assuming that you figured out what you needed to raise it by in order to buy those extra things?
Yes.
So, yeah, I'm assuming that was, that was a pretty tight fit. So if we reduced the fee, what then can't we buy, what would you leave out?
And then parents would have to buy anyways.
And then parents would have to buy anyways, yeah.
Well, I think I heard Mrs. Folket indicate that buying twenty thousand markers would bring that cost down to about forty-six cents a marker, and I think I also heard you say that they typically need five markers, so that's about two dollars and fifty cents. And I think I also heard you say that the student planners are about three dollars. So that's five dollars and fifty cents. So that leaves, what, eighteen dollars and fifty cents for construction paper and folders. If there were some other things that it would cover besides that, I have a hard time believing that it costs eighteen dollars and fifty cents roughly for home folders and construction paper. But if recorders were in there, headphones, maybe some other things that were more specific that we could explain to the public, because right now, it doesn't look to me that there's a commensurate increase in the elementary fees to cover specific costs as compared to the middle and high schools, as Mrs. Olmstead has said.
Well, it's certainly an option. Yeah, so, I mean, we could go ahead and amend this to actually include the recorders and the headphones, which would be discrete items that kids would walk away with once they're done, so that would be a pretty easy thing to track. Or we could decrease the fee increase to below fifty dollars, and then you run the risk of, once we waive free-reduced and have the family caps calculated in, we could end up with a little bit less revenue than we originally thought. And I'd love to be able to give you more accurate info, but at this point, we really won't know until we go a cycle.
I guess, I mean, that's, that's what I'm wondering, do we want to do it, you know, we've got a meeting a week, right? So, you know, do you want a little time to look at both those options and present them to us? Like if we, you know, with some more detailed itemization of costs, so if we know where it is, what are you going to put in there, along with everything else you've already got in there, and, you know, analyze the cost of those things, so we can see what that extra money is going to be spent on precisely? Or flip side, give us a reduced increase, and, you know, maybe we can bring that back?
Yeah, I mean, I suggest that we carefully and peg these in the audience. We're right about forty-two percent free and reduced lunch count, so fifty-eight percent of our students, our, forty-two percent of our students are not impacted, are exempt on free and reduced count, and fifty-eight percent of our students would be subject to the fees as established.
Again, I want to say, I appreciate all the work that you've put into this. I think you've done a great job as far as simplifying this and standardizing costs and items across the various levels. It's just that, my one sticking point is that increase in the elementary fees, as I, as I further reflect on that. Again, I apologize for bringing this up at the night that the vote is taking place.
Well, we do, we do have the option to decrease the fee amount. You know, we could make an amendment to this fee structure. We still have that ability to change that. Originally, we kept them all the same, because that was kind of the discussion that was occurring in Facilities and Finance to do that. We could, you know, entertain a different amount number there. I wouldn't go too far off of that fifty-dollar mark, just because of the fact we want to stay revenue-neutral.
I think the other, the other piece of information, as you consider your options tonight, some of the items that are not currently included in that fifty-dollar instructional material fees, like recorders or headphones, I think Dave, Dr. Benlock alluded to this, are not necessarily items that students would purchase every single year. So you may purchase a recorder if you're in elementary school, and that may last you. That could last you so.
And other kids.
And other, and other students. So keep those satisfied and reuse them. Same thing with headphones. Those could last one year, they could last four or five years, so, which is part of the reason, I think, we originally excluded those and not just excluded them, because they're not every-year purchases. So just as you, as you weigh on your decision tonight, consider that also with, depending on if we want to postpone this, reduce the fee or include more items.
I just, thank you guys for your work, and I know this is probably was so much. I just keep going back to that parent walking in the door when they've got pictures to do, you know, for every single kid, that's so expensive, and then you have all these registration fees. And then, you know, if you've got children in multiple schools, which a lot of parents do, then you've got sports and they want everything up front, just adding that to those elementary-level kids walking in, I just don't see, I agree with, with a lot of that. It just doesn't seem like a conclusive decision on what's being purchased or what's being offered to justify that twenty-five-dollar jump.
And I also am empathetic toward the, the staff who are fully immersed in developing the budget for the coming year. We know that there are some decisions being made at the state level. For example, reduction in funds for the ECB, the Education Communications Board, which is related to Wisconsin Public Radio and Wisconsin Public Television, which could have implications on budget here. We know that insurance rates go up every year. We know that other costs go up that we have little control over. And so, I do believe that those who are using the service should be involved in paying for it. I just, I just would like to see a more definitive list of things that this increase will, will cover, so that the parents understand that they're not having to go out and buy these things separately. They are being included in this fee for their children, children's education. I know, I've seen data on the, the cost of getting children prepared for school, and by the time you figure in all these fees, like pictures, which many of the schools do now, the first, first.
Registration.
Registration day and so on, and buying new clothing, because they outgrew the pants or whatever over the summer. It gets pretty pricey, so then increases in fees, you know, just, just add to that. I've known families that budget over the summer and they scour the ads, and they go here and there, and they go paycheck to paycheck, well, we can buy so many school supplies this week out of this paycheck, and then the next paycheck, we'll get the next ones. And then we've got the back-to-school fellow people trying to help out. And so, I see this as, as a global issue, but the bottom line is, and we've heard from the Executive Director of Business Services, that we're facing a deficit. And so, at some point, I think there have to be, there has to be this consideration for user fees on, on those who are using the service. So I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to look at the broad picture here and the implications of lots of folks who are impacted.
Well, if you look at the 14-15 schedule, and this is just the information that was in there, the homeschool folders, dry erase markers, envelopes, home literacy kit, et cetera, that's the quote that's in there, is up to ten dollars. If you look at the student planners, that's up to three dollars. So you're looking at, you know, right there, roughly a thirteen-dollar expense if we were to move that in. So, you know, what alternative, and I'm not, you know, that's entirely up to your, you know, your decision on what you want to do with this, but it would seem that a fifteen-dollar increase would take us to the forty-dollar mark. That would be very, very close in line with what the costs are, especially when you're starting to factor in the fact that you're going to be waiving some of these for free-reduced. That might be a good alternative to start with, and then we can get a year under our belt of looking at this, and then we'll be able to have some pretty solid data to say, okay, did we aim high, did we aim low, or were we right on the money?
And that's what we're raising the middle and the high school levels, is fifteen dollars, correct?
Correct, correct. And that was, that was originally one of the things we had talked about, was going up that fifteen- up that fifteen dollar amount. But it, but it made the elementary at forty, and then middle and high were fifty-fifty each, so, um, that would seem to be a very reasonable adjustment, but it would have to be made as an amendment on your end.
Right, would that, how would that affect the cap then on the elementary, on, would it affect the cap on elementary, on?
We can decide that right now.
Well, and remember, family cap spans all, all grade levels, okay? So that, that would be another, and I would agree, if you're gonna make that decision at the elementary, you probably should at least have a conversation about the family cap, if there needs to be an adjustment in that, and I would make both amendments at the same time.
I would, I would certainly recommend, I think, um, Dr. Benlock's suggestion is an excellent one on, on looking at, um, fifteen rather than a twenty-five dollar adjustment, and, and then a commensurate adjustment with, um, the cumulative effect, you could still leave it one fifty, um, and it just that, um, if you had three elementary children, you simply, or, if you, if you had four elementary children, you would get to the cap, and the cap would benefit you. Then you don't have to adjust the cap, you just leave it one fifty, otherwise it becomes confusing across three levels.
So that's what I was thinking, I mean, if you only go to one twenty, if you have three kids, you're still underneath.
That was the goal, was that three kids, where we, when we talked about it originally.
So I, I think by simply amending and reducing from twenty-five to fifteen, uh, the increase for elementary and leaving the others in place, I think would accomplish, um, I believe part of the concerns that's being suggested.
So do we have an amendment to that effect?
I will make the motion to reduce it.
Oh, a second.
From twenty-five down to fifteen.
Of the element?
Of the increase.
Of the increase.
Of the increase.
Let's make sure she.
Did you get that? All right.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, would you please call the board, Mrs. Collins?
Dito?
Aye.
Dito, I, Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, I, Evans?
Aye.
Evans, I, Garner?
Aye.
Garner, I, Prozok?
Aye.
Prozok, I, Lemberger?
Aye.
Lemberger, I, Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, I, amended, carry.
Uh, do we need to vote on the original?
Yeah, so do everything else now, you know.
What's that?
The amended version.
Yes, we do.
And we would be voting in a negative fashion on that, correct?
No, you've already amended.
Because you've amended it with a new amount, so now you have to vote on the resolution as it is amended.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, with the amendment, someone's voted on the original with the amendment. Is there any discussion on it?
Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, I, Evans?
Aye.
Evans, I, Garner?
Aye.
Garner, I, Prozok?
Aye.
Prozok, I, Lemberger?
Aye.
Lemberger, I, Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, I, Dito?
Aye.
Dito, I, motion carried.
Right, um, let's see if our individual considered resolutions. Just thank you guys, I, I know you guys put a lot of hard work in that. Uh, request for future agenda items.
Just a reminder, we have a very, we have a unique post-time experience by having two meetings in June, and one in July this time, so we quickly turn around with a workshop session next week. You're engaged three Wednesdays this month, um, next week, uh, workshop meeting, the following week graduation, and then the following week, uh, your action meeting for the month, so it's a, a little different than it has historically been, but it does great, um, insurance that we have, a majority of the board always present, as July is very hard to pull a full board together.
I just had a question on the June third, uh, short-range future agenda items, where it notes strategic compensation guidelines update, I'm, I'm not sure I understand what that is.
It is the report after one year of, um, our strategic compensation plan, and, uh, that's been.
Oh, okay, now I understand, thank you.
It's a report of the follow-up on, um, uh, three, four, uh, committee meetings that took place to evaluate, um, how that first-year program ran.
All right, I guess I was confused, because the second item, uh, for June third, well, strategic plan update, so we're using strategic in a couple of different ways, so, thank you, I appreciate that.
Announcements, anybody have any announcements?
One, um, at this time, I would, um, entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the disciplinary data of specific persons under nineteen-point-eight-five-one F of the Wisconsin statutes, A, a review expulsion recommendation for expulsion hearing officer for a middle school student who engaged in conduct while under the supervision of a school authority which endangered the property, health, or safety of others, and endangered the property, health, or safety of a school authority, or endangered the property, health, or safety of any employee, who writes this stuff, or a school board member of the school district one-twenty-point-one-three-C Wisconsin statutes.
So moved. Second.
Call the board, please.
Evans?
Aye.
Evans, I, Garner?
Aye.
Garner, I, Prozok?
Aye.
Prozok, I, Lemberger?
Aye.
Lemberger, I, Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, I, Dito?
Aye.
Dito, I, Eliason?
Aye.